Good evening, everyone. My name is Terrell White and I'm a trained moderator and member of the League of Women Voters of Park Rapids. The League of Women Voters, Park Rapids, is proud to be a nonpartisan and the others supporting nor opposing candidates or political parties at any level of government, but always working on vital issues of concern to the members of the public. Please read more about us in the program that you are handed. I want to thank you for attending tonight's event. Our school board candidates are Dan Gowan, Andrea Havering, Katie Howard, and Dave Trynant. I think I misspelled your name, and I apologize for that. You know, those pesky E's may just get lost. And thank you for all of the time you're taking to be with us. Thanks also to our members that are volunteering. Anna Mae Holsworth is going to be our timer, so you'll look to her as to how much time you have left. And I want to thank the Monaga Public Schools for providing this meeting space and setting everything up for us. A big help. I also want to read a statement about the videos that are being recorded. That League of Women Voters sponsors candidate forums to provide the public with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss the issues that are important to members of the public. The views expressed in each forum are those of the candidates and not the League of Women Voters. LWB posts complete, unedited recordings of the forums. Editing is authorized only for official media reporting excerpts or edited clips of a candidate forum. May not be used for partisan political purposes. This forum is being recorded by the Park Rapids Enterprise. It's being livestreamed, and I've got a video camera going for us, too. So one out of the three, that'll work really well. It all goes well with technology, that this video will be up on the League of Women Voters website, too. The candidates have received the ground rules for this event, and as audience members, we ask you to remain as quiet as possible so everyone can hear. We also, please hold any applause, et cetera, until the forum has ended, so the candidates can use all their time to answer questions. The League will determine which questions will be asked, and we will attempt in good faith to cover all areas of interest expressed by the audience. Questions will be screened, and similar questions will be consolidated, so as many topics as possible are covered. Questions will relate only to the school board's goal. No questions of a personal nature or that of an inappropriate, hostile, or unclear intent will be asked. Our goal is to have a civil discussion on issues and give you the information you need when you vote. During the event, please raise your hand, and volunteer will come around and pick up questions from you. And we will start the candidate forum with the opening statement. Each candidate, we give them two minutes for their opening statement, two minutes for their closing statement at the end, and one minute to answer each question. So let's go ahead and start, and we'll start in alphabetical order with Dan.
Perfect. I guess I'll just start by introducing myself. I'm Dan Gowan. I'm the new guy. We just moved, my family and I, just moved to Monaga last year, late last year. So this is the second year our kids are in the district. Came from St. Cloud. And just a little bit about my background. I grew up in Sarpedal. Was kind of a third-generation student of the district there. You know, I had a really good experience in the district with just having kind of really some pride in my school and my district and the town. And you know, that's really what I want for the district my kids go to. I want that for, you know, the district in which I live in. And you know, we moved up here, like I said, about a year ago. You know, we wanted to get out of the St. Cloud area and into a place that we felt more comfortable, more was more our style, I guess you could say. And so we did move to Monaga. I worked at Park Rapids at Citizens National Bank. And yeah, I really just wanted to be involved, and I get involved. And one way I wanted to try and do that was through joining the school board, running for candidacy for the school board. That's all I got.
My name is Andrea Havering. I am on the school board now. This is my eighth year. I currently serve as the school board chair. I'm married to Lauren Havering. We have three kids in the district. And I was a public school graduate. I felt like my public school education was a very good one. And I hope to continue that and continue to serve the school district, not only locally on our school board, but also as a representative delegate when we do lobbying in St. Paul. I will keep that for you.
Katie?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Katie Howard. I grew up in this area. I moved away briefly for about four years, and I've been back ever since. My husband and I have 11 children, soon to be 11 in January. I've had three students graduate from Monaga, and I have five students currently. I have three little, three little, or two little tornadoes at home, and which are a lot of fun. But we, we love our school. We love our district, and I really think that I reflect the values of our community, and I would really like to continue to do that.
David?
Good evening, Dave Trynant. I'm Richie from Pelican Rapids. Married a frazy, evergreen girl 31 years ago. We moved to the Monaga area in 1995, and we've raised one through the Monaga School District, class of 2020. Got the joy of graduating during COVID. And we have a senior this year and an eighth grader still. A year or so ago, I was asked if I would be a writing candidate to fill a vacant position for one year, and I agreed to do it for one year. And after a year, I decided to throw my name back in the hat. I've enjoyed it. I really enjoyed selecting our new superintendent. And the team that is now leading this school, I just, my, my reason for throwing my name back in the hat was just to make sure that this admin team succeeds. We have a great school system, and I'm just excited to help keep that going.
Thank you. And we're going to rotate who starts first each time. So this time, for question number one, Dave will start first, then Katie, then Dan, and then Andrea. What are the qualities that you feel are essential for successful school board members, and which ones of those do you have?
Successful qualities for a school board member? You have to be a good listener first before you speak. Understand the question, understand where the question's coming from, which I feel I do. Also, too, I think you have to have a good grasp of the community that you live in, the stakeholders that you are representing. And having been in this community since 95, worked in this community, been very active in the civic and commerce and the school, I just feel that makes a good school board member.
Katie?
Some qualities I think are important are to be a good listener, being able to, and also being able to, once decisions are made, to leave them in the boardroom. Also, being able to represent all members of our community and stakeholders, such as our teachers, our place in our community, and our children.
Yeah, you know, I'm, I think really that being, you know, a good listener, of course. You know, you have to listen and really understand what's being said and things like that. I like to think that I'm not much of a talker. I'm a much better listener. My wife would attest to that. I think cooperation, compromise, I'm married, so I know how to compromise a little bit, is crucial, you know? I think one of the most important things is being a champion, being an advocate for the students. They're faced with so much today. It's constantly at them all the time, and I think just being an advocate for their benefit is crucial. And also, I do think that having passion for your community is very, very important. And I think I do that regardless of the venue or...
I think a lot of what's been said already is very important, no matter who your school board candidate is. I feel the qualities that I have that really support me in the position that I've held on the school board is being conscientious, understanding where people are coming from. I have a very calm response, rather than being really overly emotional when I'm listening to what other people have to say. I think the ability to listen in order to understand somebody, rather than listen to respond, is really a good quality to have. And also, being on a board like this, understanding what the board can and cannot do, and then being able to support whatever decisions are made during, during that board decision process, even those that I might not have agreed with in the beginning.
This time, we'll start with Andrea, go to Dan, David, and then Katie. What do you see as Monaga's board's role in responsibility and community?
So the board's duties are essentially pretty simple. We hire the superintendent, and we tell the superintendent what to do, give a vision towards the school district. And really, beyond that, most of the things that happen in the school district are administratively provided by the superintendent to the administrative staff and then to their staff as well. Besides being at the school board table and making decisions as a group for guiding the superintendent, we also provide a catalyst between the community and the district. So I think being able to understand who our stakeholders are outside of the school, outside of the school, in our community, and being able to share that information back to the district is where our role is.
Dan?
So I've never been on a school board before. I have no experience being on board, but from my perspective, the responsibility of the board is really to be a liaison between the community, the parents, staff, students, to be an advocate for the students, to be one that is trying to give them the best education, the most opportunity that they can have to really create a district in which people want to be in. In addition to that, I think it's important to make decisions that help run the district, and sometimes over tough decisions, whether they be budgetary or what have you, but I think that all those are really the roles of the school board.
I guess I'm gonna go to what I put in the candidate forum. Our job as school board members is to provide that guidance and insight from fellow stakeholders, which we are also stakeholders, giving our superintendent and our administrative staff the proper tools to effectively do the jobs they're hired to do, which is provide our kids with the best education possible. And that's what I feel our role and responsibility is.
Katie?
I agree with everything everyone said. I'll just add a couple of things. I also think that we represent our community's values, and we make policy and ensure that it's implemented. And then another thing that we also do is contract negotiations.
All right. This time, we'll start with Katie, Dave, Andrea, and Dan. What do you want to be on the school board, and what do you hope to accomplish this next Katie, you get to start. Okay.
I really would love to continue my role on the school board. It's really important to me to be invested in our children's education. Some things that I'd love to accomplish would be more college in the schools and making Monaga a school of choice in the area.
I said before, our, our school has a new leadership team that I think is doing a phenomenal job, and not that our old team didn't, but we had a lot of turnover. And one of my main goals is to make sure that that ceases, that we hire the right people and keep the right people, and that our admin team, including our superintendent, gets the support that they need to make that happen. I think we've got some great people in those positions, and we've got a super staff that is being heard, and I just, I want, I want to keep that momentum rolling. That's my main accomplishment, is keeping that, keeping that momentum rolling in our school district.
I feel like the school board is in a, in a good place. I've really enjoyed the work that I've done on the school board the past few years, and I really would like to see that continue. I feel like there's, there's so much work that we've started, and to be able to finish that. I believe that the school district will remain physically responsible. I believe that the school district will continue to represent the community that we live in. And the other thing that I have really enjoyed as a school board member is going to St. Paul and bringing our rural values there as a delegate. I would really like to continue that work.
And Dan?
I really want to be on the school board because honestly, I'm kind of frustrated or sick of our culture and all the things that our students are facing. You know, our three kids have either different, different ages, they're five, 10, and 14, and they all have things that they're up against. I really want to make sure that our students have, you know, a good education with plenty of opportunity with just, there's so much, I feel like not, just in general going against them, that I want to help in any way I can. So we moved up here, and I just want to get involved. I think one thing that I really hope to accomplish is to learn more about the district. I can unmute, so I really just have a passion of learning, and I want to learn the history of the district, so why policies were put in place, some of those types of things. And then I just really want to have Monaga be premier district. I want people to want to come to school here. I want the community to have pride in the school, and...
I got distracted by that young man waving. Sorry. This time, we'll start with Dan, go to Andrea, then Dave, and then Katie. Given the fact that many schools are competing for the most qualified teachers and other staff, how do you propose to attract and retain qualified staff?
Well, I think it's important to have a district that people want to work in and live in. I think it comes down to, you know, pride in the school, you know, and we can do that through our athletics or through our extracurriculars, through our good test scores. I think it's really important to have teachers be appreciated, feel appreciated. I don't think that, especially although the last couple of years has been particularly hard for teachers, but I feel like, you know, we need to have them feel valued and really show pride. And I want the community to be behind the school and get, get involved in the school and all of the things that we do here. So I think that those things are ways that we can really attract new teachers and retain ones that we currently have.
Andrea?
Competition for staff has been a real stickler issue, not just locally, but statewide, nationwide. And our conversations at the board table with the superintendent have focused on that now and then. I feel that we've been starting to address that, to look at the superintendent's goals and the district goals, to see what we can do to make this a place that people want to come to first of all, and then want to stay. I know there's been some history of school districts like ours as being a place where teachers will start and then they'll move on. So if you can get somebody in the door, then, then show them what a great place this is, what great kids we have, what good support we have from our admin team. And I think the thing that we can do as individual board members is just to let our staff know that we are normal people. You can call us, you can say hi to us, and we really appreciate them when they're on the job.
It's not technically the job of the school board to find that qualified staff. It's to make sure that we've got the right people leading this school in the superintendents and the, and the principals. And I, I'm excited about the staff that we have, the leadership again, and the people that they are bringing. Every work session that we have, every, every board meeting that we have, we're finding out about new people coming to Monaga to teach our kids. And like Andrea said, it's listening and hearing what their concerns are. And that's, I mean, one of the reasons I mentioned that we needed to look at doing a exit interview was to find out why we were losing staff and how we can retain that, you know, retain those good people.
Katie?
A couple of things that we need are good wages. We need to have successful contract negotiations. Sometimes that gets a person's foot in the door, and then, once they get here, we need to make sure that our staff feel supported and want to be here by focusing on building up our climate and culture. Our, our current admin, who just came in, have been doing a really good job of that, and we've been having some really good feedback from them.
All right. This time, we start with Katie, go to Dave, Dan, and Andrea. What do you see as the greatest strengths of this district?
Some of the greatest strengths of our district are our community. We have a great community that we're involved in, a lot of wonderful parents and wonderful children, and I think they really attract, like, go back to the last, you know, the last question of why people want to come here, and that is why.
Dave?
I guess I'd have to add to the same thing. Our strength is the community. It's the core values that, that attract people to this community. It's the, the, the school district is physically strong. We have good leadership. We have a great school board, and I think, I think that just better things to count.
I think a great strength is, that this district has is being physically responsible. I think that is, is huge, because not all districts are. I think pride in, in being brave, being part of this community is huge, and I'd really like to see that continue and grow. And there's been a lot of new faces in this district, and I think that is a strength. I think change is seen when it's hard, but I think that it can be incredibly valuable and beneficial.
I believe that people are the greatest strength in our district, and that encompasses everyone. It includes our staff, our kids, our parents, and even those community members that don't have any kids in our school district. And my one thought on that is, although we don't all agree on everything, we do all agree that moving forward is the best thing to do.
This time, we'll start with Andrea, then Dan, Katie, and Dave. What do you see as the biggest challenges that your district faces?
This is a hard one for me. One thing that came to the top of my mind is one of the reasons that I have decided to continue and put my, my name in to run again. The challenges of the past couple of years have been really tough on everyone, and I feel like a lot of those challenges aren't over. There are mandates that come from the state and federal levels that don't come with financial or, or other support to, to make it work in districts like ours. And that's, that's one challenge that really made me consider whether I wanted to run again, but it's also the challenge that made me say, yeah, I think it's worth it, and I'm, I'm gonna do this again.
Okay, Dan?
When, when a question was asked, the first thing that came to mind was the greatest challenge would be our culture and society. And social media plays a huge part in that. I think that our students are, are constantly hearing messages of, you're not good enough, you're not valued, you should be like this. I think that's incredibly detrimental to their mental health, to their just overall value. I think that students need to feel valued, and I really think that they can get that message here. And I just really think that, you know, we need to just be more, you know, sensitive to that and really creating that message of, you know, each student is valued in their own way.
Katie?
Some of the biggest challenges that face us are staff shortages, such as teachers and bus drivers. And another thing, which doesn't have to do with that, but we are constantly being passed things on to us that we have no say in from the state or federal level. And a lot of times, our school board is the last stand between that and our kids.
One of the biggest challenges that we have faced is the changes in our admin teams and such. And so it's, it's good to have some continuity and, and, you know, for our, for our stakeholders to know that, you know, they've got an ear, an ear that's listening. I too agree that our, our change in society is going to be our biggest challenge in the next couple of years. What these kids are facing every day, that there's something new, something different, something that's hard to understand, and different challenges that we're going to face as a school board.
This time, we'll go with Dave, then Katie, then Andrea, and then Dan. As a school board member, how would you respond to parents' concern about what's being taught in the classroom?
So there's a procedure that we need to go through as school board members, and not everybody knows it or talks about it. When a parent voices a concern about what's being taught in a class, first, they need to address that, we hope with the teacher, if they feel comfortable, and then with the principal, whether it be elementary or high school. The next step would be with the superintendent, and then the superintendent is supposed to bring it to the board. We're here to listen, but we need to follow procedure to make sure that both sides, every side, is getting, is getting heard, and then we can make an informed decision if we need to.
Katie?
Pretty much the exact same, that same thing. When a parent is concerned, just to follow that chain of command, said go to the teacher, instruct them to go to the teacher first, the principal, the superintendent, and then to the school board. But always be a listening ear for them, I think is really important.
Andrea?
I think the most important part of this answer is the chain of command, which we've heard twice now. When, when I hear something that's going on in the classroom that parents are concerned about, I first thank you, thank them for feeling comfortable enough to tell me. I know that can be a hard thing to do. And then letting them know what the school board's role is in that and what the proper procedure is, because oftentimes, parents don't know that. And... procedure is, because oftentimes, parents don't know that, and they might only pick up on, oh, I should tell the school board because the school board can do this or that for me. So helping to educate those parents and showing them the way and knowing that somebody is listening to them.
Dan?
I will give a very similar answer to that. You know, the chain of command, of course, is crucial. I think listening, listening empathetically, I think, you know, if a parent in the district has a concern about curriculum, odds are there's more parents out there that have a similar concern, or maybe I may have that concern as well. So I think, you know, listening, listening to them empathetically, pointing them in the right direction. I'm a researcher-type person, so if they come to me with a concern, you know, someone's this part of the curriculum or whatever, I'm probably going to look that up and try and learn more about how they have that concern, so that maybe I can help in another way in the future.
Okay, this time we'll start with Dan, Andrea, Dave, and then Katie. History is a very important part of our education. What part of U.S. history should be taught, for example, slavery, treatment of natives, and the Holocaust, et cetera?
It's a great question. I actually love history. I would say that, you know, I'm a, I'm a very big believer in, you know, teaching about the formation of this country, why it was formed, the reasons that our, you know, our forefathers wanted to have a country like this. I think that it's incredibly important to teach our kids that many men and women died so that we could be free and have freedoms that we all enjoy and take for granted, unfortunately, every day. So I think that's incredibly important to teach our kids.
Andrea?
I really appreciate Dan's answer. I would also like to echo that. The other thought I had about teaching history in school is understanding that there's, there's a lot of sides to a story. I've always told my kids, especially when they're bickering or they have a disagreement, that if there's two of you, there's two sides to the story. If there's three of you, there's three. So understanding that history comes with names and dates and places, but it also comes with story. And there's oftentimes more to that story than you can understand in a, in a short history book, but knowing that even if you pass a task and you understand what the history is, that there's probably more to that story that you don't know.
Dave?
I think, I guess it's my opinion, if we start picking and choosing what we teach our kids about our history, where does it stop? We, if you're going to hide the truth, if you're going to hide the facts about our history, you're walking a fine line. I, I don't, I think our school boards are put in place to make sure that, that our curriculum is respectful and teaches what our students need to know.
Katie?
Everyone has such good answers, and I'll just add one little thing to that, and just, I'm just going to say that just because something makes us uncomfortable doesn't mean that we shouldn't be taught it.
Okay, this time we're going to start with Andrea, go to Katie, Dave, and then Dan. What roles of any should the district assume in dealing with issues such as mental health?
Well, the school district definitely deals with mental health, whether they choose to take an active part in that or not. Students and staff, I mean, they're full people. They have emotions, they have reactions based on their own history and their own upbringing and their own prejudices. And I say prejudices being the way you naturally react to something, not putting that in a negative or a positive light. So I think the school district has a role to understand how mental health affects everybody who's in the building, and it, understanding that when kids come to school, when staff comes to school, they're not leaving everything at home when they come. They're bringing a lot of that with them. So the first part is understanding, and the second part is what can we help with while we're in the building.
Katie?
Excuse me. As a school board, we need to make sure that we have professionals on staff to help our students. A lot of times, these professionals, it's required by law that they be here, which is good, especially after COVID. A lot more students came back to us than everywhere else, having a lot of mental health issues. And so we can, like I said, have the professionals on staff to help them. And like I said, it is also required that we do, so.
Dave?
She took my answer. I echo the same thing. It's required by law. We have to make sure that we're hiring the right people to help those students that need that help.
Andrea?
Yeah, I mean, I definitely think we should be taking an active part in this. You know, I have a student with, you know, those facing mental health challenges. I myself have, you know, battled anxiety for a better part of my life. You know, I think it's super important to never face with such a mental health crisis, you know, after, you know, where we're at right now. I think, you know, just the same way as somebody, you know, has, you know, issues going on at home, and they bring that stuff to work, students are bringing things to school. And how can they possibly learn well if they're, you know, maybe not giving help with some of those things?
This time we're going to go with Dave, Katie, Dan, and Andrea. What do you see as the relationship between the superintendent and the school board?
The school board hires the superintendent to lead the school, and he is the liaison between the admin team and the staff to the school board. It has to be a good working relationship. It has to be open communication. And I think we have that. I really, I'm comfortable with, with the staff that we have right now and excited.
Katie?
The school board's role is to be, is a governing role of your school. Our superintendent, he takes care of the day-to-day operations, and it is really essential to have a good relationship between the two.
And Dan?
Yeah, I mean, there's the thing sort of hire and that working relationship. I think communication, as I was mentioning, is incredibly important, having that open line of communication, you know, maybe bouncing ideas, being a sounding board with each other, I think is pretty huge. You know, the one thing I want in superintendent is, I want to be excited about that superintendent. And I, you know, I've, you know, met our current superintendent, had a few interactions with him and things like that, and I'm pretty excited about it. I think they made a good choice. But I think that, yeah, just being, kind of having that good working relationship is incredibly important.
Andrea?
My initial answer to what kind of relationship should they have is, it should be a good one. I feel like the best relationships between a governing board like a, like a school board and the person they hire to run the organization is a supportive role. I think that the superintendent can support the school board, the school board can support the superintendent, and that when you're working in collaboration with one another, you might come with different ideas to that table, to the board table, to make decisions, but working together, you oftentimes come up with better ideas than either of you were to come up with on your own. So supportive and collaborative.
All right, thank you. We're going to start with Andrea, Dan, Dave, and Katie on this one. What do you see as the key to a successful contract negotiation process?
I should have saved my collaboration word for this answer. I used to think that contract negotiations were most successful if everybody left the table wishing that they had something else, like if you came with all of your ideas and they came with all of your ideas, all of their ideas, and nobody really got what they wanted, that was the best solution. After being on contract negotiation teams for the past couple of rounds, I have learned that collaboration works much better. Coming to the table and understanding what your negotiating team is asking for and why they're asking for it, and then also being really transparent as a board to say, here's our financial situation, here's our goals and our visions as a district, how can we make all of our goals work together? And that makes the most successful end contract.
Dan?
I have no experience with contract negotiations. I'll start my, my time with that. But what I will say is that listening to both sides of the table is incredibly important. You need to know the needs that they have, the needs that the district has, and it has to be working together for the, for the kind of betterment of the district. I think that if everybody leaves the table and it's a win-win, that's the only way that it can be done. If one side wins and the other side loses, it's not worth, not worth doing. And so I think that just having that conversation of the need of everybody and that both parties win, that would be successful in my mind, too.
Dave?
I'll admit, I have not also, neither been part of contract negotiations, but it's, it's making sure as a school board that we have the right people in those positions, that our good listeners understand the process and understanding what they're hearing and what, what both sides are asking, or what one side is asking for and what the other side can give. It's, it's, it's knowing that there typically is not two winners that come out of a negotiation. There's, there's, there's one that's satisfied and one that gave. And understanding what can and can't be given is a big part of that.
Katie?
I've been involved pretty extensively in contract negotiations since I came here. I would just say that it's much harder to come to an agreement when both parties are on two different pages. And so if both sides are coming in reasonable, it's much easier to come to an agreement.
Next question, we'll start with Katie, then Dave, Andrea, and Dan. In the past, the school board passed a resolution supporting a universal free meal, meals program. Do you support this type of program, and do you see it as a benefit to your students?
Yeah, we did pass a resolution for free meals. I do, or I did support it. Now, it is much different in what is coming to us from, I think it's a federal level. So in the past, yes, when it wasn't front of us, I did support it. A lot of, we had a lot of great benefits from the universal free meals in Managua. A lot of the money that came from that, we were also able to use to further our children's education and to really help them. But now it's a little bit different, and the scene has changed a little bit, and that's no longer, it's, it's not the same as it once was. So we'll have to see what happens rolling forward.
Katie?
I was not a supporter of it when it first came out. I'm all for, if there's a need, support that need, but the way that it was rolled out, it felt like it was just looking for personal data, personal information that wasn't needed of the entire district. It was, it was, it felt like it was being forced on the entire school district, and I did not support it. Like I said, I, there, when there's a need, you support that need, but you don't need to make it part of the entire district need.
Andrea?
Yeah, so Katie mentioned a couple of things that have changed in, in the past couple of years, so I won't go over that again, but I am fully in support of feeding kids who are hungry. As I've been on the board longer and longer and talked to more staff members who are in direct communication with kids and teaching kids, I've heard over and over that we have more kids in our school district than I would have ever realized, who are not food-secure at home, and that hungry kids can learn, so I'm currently supporting that.
Dan?
So I don't know all the history and the laws and things that have changed, and I wrote down, I absolutely support it as a parent. You know, we came into this district, the last district we were in did not have that. And so, you know, I think that in the district I was in before, there was a stigma of, you know, free lunch or reduced lunch or things like that. Kids know. I think that this puts everybody on the same playing field. I think it's a great opportunity. I don't know all the implications on how that affects budget and how if funding's not available and things like that. From a parent's perspective, I really like not having to make lunches every day. That was, but yeah, I would be in support of it.
This question will be Dan, Andrea, Dave, and Katie. What are your plans for improving communications with the broader school community, including parents, but especially residents without children?
It's a great question. You know, when we first came here, I had some concern for the communication and thought maybe there was a lack of communication in some areas. This year, I felt it's greatly improved. I do think that there is an opportunity out there for communication to go out, you know, to residents who don't have kids. I think that, you know, the one way that that, you know, could happen is, you know, just having students volunteering and being out there in the community, you know, getting, you know, wearing their Managua gear and getting out there and just being involved. And I think that's a great way to communicate pride in the district. I think that there are great ways, whether it be newspaper, Facebook, different things like that, of what's going on in the district is a great way also to reach other people, other residents.
Andrea?
There's one thing about communication is in that you can always be better at it. And even though this school district, this year, I feel it's been doing a better job than the past couple of years for a lot of different reasons, there's always, there's always ways to make that even better. One of the things I've really appreciated seeing again is pictures of our school kids in the newspaper. That newspaper reaches a lot of people, and especially a lot of people who don't have kids. I can't remember what the statistic is about how many people actually touch a newspaper once it's delivered somewhere, but it's a pretty high number, and getting, I think the newspaper and other media that we have access to are the best ways to improve that communication.
Dave?
I, I think it's about having the right people in that position, and I, I feel that we've made some great improvements. I think our new administration team again is, is doing a phenomenal job of communicating with the, with the stakeholders, all of them, those with and without. I, I know that our superintendent is going out into the community, he's meet and greet with, with those that have and those that don't have students in our, and he's listening. He did that prior to, prior to our interviews with him, and he's continuing that to today. And I, I feel that our elementary and high school principals are also making themselves available and that there's, I feel that the quality of communication has improved greatly in the last year.
Like Dave said, it has improved greatly this last year, especially for parents and students and staff and those who are here, whether it be through mail, Facebook, phone calls, paper, flyers coming home, emails. But for those who are not here, not involved, I think one of the biggest things is to get them to want to be here and to want to be involved. And when you do, then you tend to want to know what's And when you do, then you tend to want to know what's going on, and you seek that out. And I think one thing that we've been doing this year has been improving our community yet, where there's been a lot more people coming into our building that have never been here before.
This will be our last question, unless there's one more from the audience that wants to be picked up. And this time, we'll start with Katie, go with Dave, and Dan, and Andrea. What is your position on open enrollment students? What do you see as positives and negatives of open enrollment?
My position on open enrollment hasn't really changed from when I first got on the school board, which was, we had, we had a lot of students that were influxed into Monaga because Monaga is a great school and it was the school of choice. These students are important, once they're here, they're ours, and we need to treat them that way. And a lot of these students brought a ton of positivity to our district. One of the negatives we had was we didn't have room for them. And with the new building and with everything, we now have room for those students. What we've done now too is, we have not been expanding things like our bus lines, where we, once we, sorry, once we go a certain position, we don't go past that. That's kind of to make sure that our community is happy with what we've been doing.
Dave?
Diddle there, but to me, open enrollment's kind of an oxymoron. You have a facility and a staff that can handle X amount of students. You have to draw a line somewhere.
Okay, Dan?
So as far as open enrollment goes, I would say that in general, I would be opposed to open enrollment. But with that said, I do think that, you know, having a student that comes from outside the district, you know, that might give them, you know, might give kids an opportunity that they wouldn't otherwise have, which is a good thing, I think. Definitely space issues is a, would be a con for sure. You know, there were schools back where we come from that were open enrollment, and they just exploded, they got big fast. And then the district looked not the same, it lost its identity. So I think that's a major downfall for student, for open enrollment districts.
Andrea?
My opinion hasn't really changed on open enrollment since I've been here either. It's, we've had a lot of discussions at the school board level about open enrollment. I believe that all parents should have the right to send their kiddos to get the best education they have access to. That includes open enrollment. And we don't have a lot of options in rural Minnesota, and school district lines are really funny. So you could be only five miles from the school district, or from the school building, and be outside the school district, and a different direction, you could be 20 miles from the school building and still be in the school district. For those couple of reasons, I've always supported open enrollment, where you have the ability to fit those extra kids in the building.
We'll go to the closing statements then, and we'll start with Katie, then Dave, then Dan, and Andrea will follow up. So Katie?
I guess just in closing, I just want to thank everyone for coming. Being a non-state school board member has been really important to me, and I really enjoy being involved in the district.
Dave?
I too would like to thank the Legal Women Voters for hosting us tonight and all those that came and submitted questions. I guess I would like to clarify, I, if we have the room, if we have the staff, and we bring the students in, we provide the best education possible for as many as possible with the, with the means that we have. And it's our job as school board members to make sure that that continues.
Dan?
Yeah, thank you everybody for being here, I appreciate that. I, I'm a new face, I'm not experienced at all in being in a school board, anything like that. I'm not a politician, I'm not a very good talker, but I have a lot of passion for my kids, and I have a lot of passion for their peers and other kids in this district. We moved to this district for a reason, and I want to see it be great. I want to see people want to be here, I want to see people really excited on Friday nights at football games, or at choir concerts with a gym packed. That's what I want for the district. And, you know, if I was elected school, on a school board, you know, I would want to make sure that I try and do everything I can to make that happen. And I really appreciate being here.
Andrea?
I also echo thanks to everyone who made this night possible, people who showed up in person, people who were watching online, people who will watch later online. I think the most important part of this type of forum is helping people to become educated, informed voters. So that's, that's the thing I'm most appreciative of, is being able to give that to people. Anybody who hasn't had their questions answered can of course pick up the phone and call any one of us, we're all available, we're all normal people. I'm a transplant to Monaga, I'm from Upper Michigan, been here now 18 years, and I feel like I really have enjoyed this community, and I've enjoyed helping this community to make a really good public education system for our kids. I believe that public education can create that type of environment to allow kids to be pushed beyond what they think is possible, and give them more opportunities than they might not, or they might have just in their other opportunities at home. And I guess I just wanted to close by saying that I'm committed to doing the job, not just at the board table, but also as an advocate for our school district at St. Paulville. Thank you.
And thank you, everyone, Janet Aix, and all the volunteers and our audience. This was a very good forum, and I think we all learned a lot. Remember that early voting started, I think, a couple of weeks ago, and that, so you can go to your courthouse and vote, you can vote, have some heat, and the last day you get a chance to vote is November 8th, so go out and vote. Thank you all.